The Board of Education welcomes and values your comments in the time set aside during the first regular meeting of the month for public participation. So all concerns may be heard, please observe these rules for public participation. Only three people may speak on the same topic. Each speaker may take up to five minutes to address the board, and each speaker may not reflect at first late on individuals. If a parent or community member has a complaint about an employee, it should be referred to the employee supervisor. Those wishing to address the board on agenda items only may sign up at the podium prior to the start of the meeting. Tonight's forum to address the board concerning non-agenda items will include only those who had signed up by noon earlier today with the superintendent's office. These will take place at the end of tonight's agenda. As a reminder, public participation is an opportunity for the community to address the board in a formal setting. However, it is not designed or intended to be interactive. While we greatly appreciate individuals engaging with us, we expect the administrative and building-level staff to work cooperatively with the community to address items discussed. We also request that audience members be respectful of each participant and the process. We thank you for attending tonight's Board of Education meeting and for your support of our school system.
Stand and join us for the pledge. Following the pledge, we'd like you to take a moment of silent reflection for the students and families that were involved in the Tuscarus Valley bus accident as well. So, once we finish the pledge, we'll do that as well. So, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Mr. Bozo.
Yes.
Ms. Johnson.
Yes.
Mr. Caldwell.
Thank you. Yes. Good evening, everyone. Next, we'll have approval of the minutes for the October 23, 2023 Board of Education Tonight, we will call the Monday, November 20th, 2023 Regular Board of Education Order. Roll call, please.
Mr. Bozo.
meeting.
Here.
Can I motion for that?
Ms. Johnson.
So move.
Here.
Either one.
Ms. Martindale.
Yeah, he's got it.
Mr. Schreiner.
All right.
Here.
Ms. Johnson with the motion, second by Mr. Bozo.
Mr. Caldwell.
Here.
Thank you.
Next, we'll have a public hearing, and I'll read what it's about regarding our five-year Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please. forecast. Consistent with District Treasurer Hugh W. Garci, Jr., October 11th, 2023, notice under
Ms. Johnson.
Yes.
Mr. Bozo.
Yes.
Ms. Martindale.
Yes.
section 3309.345, UHIR code, the Board of Education will now hear the issue of whether
Mr. Caldwell.
Yes. And, as I said, I got ahead of myself. Next, we will have the annual financial review and five-year forecast by Mr. Hugh Garci. or not to reemploy school employee retirement system retiree Hugh W. Garci, Treasurer.
Slides. Slides, please. Yeah, there you go.
This individual was given notice to the attempt to retire under the school employees retirement
President Caldwell, members of the board, it's my pleasure to go over a few financial reports with you tonight outlining the financial status of the school district.
system effective at the end of December 31st, 2023, and has applied for reemployment in
Go ahead and move that slide forward.
his previous position effective at the beginning of the day, January 1st, 2024.
The three reports I'm going to talk about, the first report is under construction right now.
Any members of the audience who wishes to comment on this issue will be recognized.
It's called the Annual Comprehensive Financial Report.
I apologize, so this for the five-year forecast, that's the next section.
It's a 180-page report, very thick.
So, if anyone wants to discuss this agenda item, let us know.
It's used, it's based on modified accrual accounting.
See no one with the mic, we'll move forward.
It's very confusing for readers to read.
Next, we'll entertain a motion to adopt today's agenda.
It's mostly for people that are buying our bonds when we go out to the public to issue
So move, Schreiner.
debt to construct our buildings.
Thank you, Mr. Schreiner. We have a second?
It's also used as a main catalyst for our financial audit that the state auditor performs
No second.
Thank you, Ms. Martindale. Roll call, please.
Mr. Schreiner.
Yes.
every year and puts an opinion on. Ms. Martindale. So, that report usually comes out towards the middle of December, middle of, end of December. That will be put on our district webpage once completed, once the audit is complete and the opinion is stated by the state auditor's office. It is also, all audits are searchable on the state auditor's website. If you want to find an audit for the city of Grove City, Franklin Township, school district in your area, you can go search those there. So, that one is under review and under getting completed as we speak. The first one I want to talk about is we do an annual financial review every year. We usually do it in December, but we decided to move it up and combine it with the five-year forecast this year, just to streamline things a little bit. So, the annual financial review highlights revenues and expenditures from the previous fiscal year. So, when I'm going over that financial review, it'll be for the 21, the 22, 23 school year. We are currently in the 23, 24 school year. The third report that I'm going to go over tonight is called the five-year forecast. It's required by law that we pass a five-year forecast by the end of November, and that four, five-year forecast is then given to the Department of Education and posted on their website. Every school district has to use the same format for the five-year forecast. It provides financial information and assumptions that are used to create the financial forecast. It's also necessary that that five-year forecast is updated if there's any significant changes to the forecast. Generally speaking, we've only had to, we, you have to update it by May of every year. So, generally speaking, we don't have an update between October, November, and May. But if anything does major, anything major does happen, we are required to do that by law. So, the first report I'm going to go over is the annual financial review. I want to highlight on the revenues. So, if you compare 2023 over 2022 fiscal year, we had about a 4.4% increase in revenues, representing $12.7 million of new revenues. The increase, it really wasn't new money. What I want to point out, we had a situation a few years back where Mount Carmel Hospital down here on 71 in Grove City, it's a, it's a non-taxable entity. They don't pay property taxes. But they had not filed their exemption in time, so they got a tax bill of about $10 million, and they paid that tax bill. So, we got an influx of money that I knew right away that, oh, this, we're not going to be able to keep this money. So, red flags went up. I knew there was something not quite right in our collection, so I went hounding for it, and I, you know, I found that at Mount Carmel had done that. So, no real issue, but we made sure it was accounted for correctly in our forecast. But that eight million of it was, was the school district's money out of the $10 million bill, and that money came out of our property tax collections in 2022. So, when you're looking at the each year-over-year, it makes it look a little strange. So, because it went out in 2022, our new dollars that we got in fiscal '23, that $12 million, really eight million was kind of overinflated in that number. Just wanted to point that out. Expenditures, if you go to the next slide, when you compare '23 to '22, that's about a 9.2% increase. Again, that's a $24.8 million increase in expenditures. Again, there are some nuances to that. We, as you know, the ESAR funds have been flowing in through the district. Some of those ESAR funds replaced some of the funds that were paid for out of the general fund. So, if you're looking at, you know, apples to apples, it doesn't really compare that way. So, there's a couple strange nuances that happened in 2022, ESAR funds and then those Mount Carmel refunds that either over or underinflated our revenues or expenditures. What I do want to point out, those two of all of our expenditures in our general fund specifically, if you look at the big blue portion and then that next one, next one's, I guess, it's kind of magenta color, those two right there, 72 cents out of every dollar goes to construction. Out of every dollar we spend, 72 cents of that goes to instruction, and that's where we should be spending our money, to be honest. If you look at a couple of the other major categories, transportation and keeping our buildings up to snuff is about another 14 cents out of every dollar we spend on that. So, we're putting our money in the right places, I believe, and making sure that our students are getting a good education. We also have, those two, first two slides were all about the general fund. We are, we are also charged to spend some other funds that we get restricted dollars for. Special revenue funds, that's the biggest blue piece to the right. Go one more slide down. Special revenue funds, that big blue piece there, those are, account for things like federal and state grants, Title I, IDEA, Head Start. Also, our ESAR funding is in a special revenue fund. So, those funds, what's different about these types of funds, they are restricted-use funds. They're ones that the dollars go into, and we have to spend it specifically on what we're told we're supposed to spend it on. The next, the next one, the next largest one of those would be internal service and agency funds combined together. Those are, account for things like our self-insurance program, our pension obligations that we send to the state of Ohio. Another large one is our capital projects fund. That piece of the pie gets much bigger when we're in our OFCC projects. We're kind of winding that program down, so that shrunk quite a bit from fiscal year '21, or fiscal year '22, it was 30, about 38%. It's all the way down to 13% now because the buildings were open last school year. The expenditures are down for capital projects. That's why that's had, that piece of the pie got smaller. Enterprise funds, enterprise funds are things, our food services are our largest enterprise fund. What I can tell you about our food service fund, what is good for Southwestern City Schools is that it runs in the black. There are many school districts in the state of Ohio that the general fund has to supply it money and put, give money to the food service fund to make sure their operations stay afloat. We have not had to do this since the time I've been here in Southwestern, and that's a testimony to our food service director, Lisa Hammerick. She's our supervisor of food service department, and she does a great job balancing her own budget and also has been able to do some things above and beyond by providing new equipment, stoves, fridges, you know, the things that need to be upgraded. We've done a good job, and she's done a good job keeping that afloat there. Any questions on last year's financial review? And to shift focus to the forecast? So, I have a few slides to talk about in the forecast. The first slide I'll talk about will talk about just our overall revenues, expenditures, and cash balances. And next one, I'll talk some revenue highlights from this fiscal year out to the future and some expenditure highlights doing the same, and then finally finish up with a little look at how we compare to other school districts in Franklin County. So, if you, if you look at this slide, generally speaking, I try to be conservative on revenues and expenditures. And when you're talking about a $300 million budget, if you're 2% conservative on the revenue side and the expenditure side, that's $6 million and $6 million, that's a $12 million difference in the bottom line. Now, that, that sounds huge, $12 million sounds huge, but I just need to let people know, like, every payroll rerun is about $8 million. So, that's, $12 million sounds like a lot, but every payroll rerun is $8 million. So, it's, just to put that in perspective, we want to be conservative on our revenues and expenditures. We want to make sure that we don't overestimate our revenues, and we don't want to underestimate our expenditures. That way, we'll always stay in a good financial position. It's something that I've done every year that I've done a forecast here, and I think the, the board and the community doesn't like surprises, so it's a good way to run our, our business. I do want to point out that there, you'll see that, that yellow line, that's our cash balance line. It does show that it's going down in the future. I'm going to point out a few reasons why. Some of those reasons why might, may change in the future to the positive, but I just want to point out some of the reasons why in the next couple of slides. I do want to, I do want to say that our, we have a cash balance target of three to six months of what our operating expenditures would be cash balance compared to operating expenditures. Our target is between three to six months, right? That's where we think we're in a good spot to weather storms. If the state budget has, is having issues, we can weather that storm. If property taxes aren't coming in how they're supposed to, we can weather that storm. If there's large inflation, we can weather that storm. We've been through some storms in my time here, and we've been able to, to ride those out. So, having a solid cash balance is a good thing to have. Currently, we're, from fiscal year '24 through fiscal '28, we're about five to 10 months at any point in time during that forecast, so we're in a pretty good spot right now. What I do want to point out also to that, it seems, it seems almost unbelievable to me, when we passed our last levy, our last new tax levy for operating dollars was in 2009. And that was our, our slogan back then was promises made, promises kept. And we promised that we'd be off the ballot through 2013. It's now 10 years later, and we still have not been back on the ballot. And we're not anticipating to be on the ballot through 2028. That is a good thing. So, this forecast right here, you can see, we have, still have a decent cash balance in 2028. You know, there may be some factors that will be positive or negative as we move forward for the next five years, but we just want to keep that in mind, you know, that we are in good shape through 2028, not foreseeing any crazy things happening, I guess. Let's look at revenues. Get a little detail, a little context behind this. So, I think everybody in the room knows reappraisal is going on, and I think it makes a lot of people really nervous when they see property values going up by 50%. We're, we're looking at about a 50% increase in property values in our school district. Before everybody gets real antsy about that, reappraisal is really reallocating who pays what amount. So, and I'm going to try to make this in simplest terms. If the average value goes up 50%, if your value goes up 50%, your taxes should stay roughly the same. If your value goes up 75%, you're going to pay more taxes. Consequently, if your, if your value goes up 25%, your taxes are going to go down. So, people, some people pay more, some people pay less, some people pay the same. That's really what's going on in reappraisal. I will put a footnote on that. There is something called the 20-mill floor. There's only one school district, school district in this county that's on the 20-mill floor, that's Hamilton. And if, if there, you have to have a local level support of 20 mills. So, no matter how many votes, voted mills you have, if that starts going down, 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 because value goes up, you can't go below 20. So, if you're at the bottom, and it can't go any lower, and the, and the value goes up, the taxes are going to go up more significantly in districts like that. So, the state is looking at some changes in how they do reappraisals. Nothing was passed for this next reappraisal year, so the reappraisal is going to work how it normally works. Thankfully for our school district, we're not at the 20-mill floor, and people's property taxes won't balloon like they could in a district that does. But I just want to make sure that you're aware of that, because that's something that we need to look at and make sure where we are in the future. We will see some increase on our inside mills. Every school district, there are 10, there are 10 inside mills that are shared by a school district, the county, the township, the city. Those 10 mills don't ever change. They're called unvoted mills. Nobody voted for those, they're just put on everybody's property taxes. So, those don't change. So, as values increase, the inside mill amount you pay will increase. Southwestern City Schools has an inside millage rate of 3.85 mills. The average in the state of Ohio for school districts is 4.26. So, we're kind of on the lower end of that. There are some school districts that get five, an over-five mills, but we're, we're at 3.85. So, our, our portion, the reason why I bring that up is when, when values increase, some school districts have a bigger benefit than our school district does. It's not good or bad, it's, it's going to be 3.85 mills, we're never going to change. The only way we would get additional inside mills is that another taxing authority within those 10 mills decided to give us some, and they're not going to give us any after that there right now. So, that's where we are with, with property taxes. A big chunk of our dollars, thankfully, comes from the state, and that's under that unrestricted grants and aid. Roughly 40% of our dollars come from the state. So, we have a good balance. We have a good balance of property taxes and a good balance of state funding. So, when anything really, whenever there's major shifts in any of those things, we're in a pretty good spot, because it would be like having an investment portfolio. We're kind of diversified in how we collect our funds. We're also diversified in how we collect our funds and our property taxes. We have about 35% of our dollars come from our commercial and industrial properties around here. If you live in Upper Arlington, they don't have businesses like we do. Bexley doesn't have businesses like we do. They're all, you know, very high residential portion of their, comes from their residential taxes, very big part, portion. We have, the casino in our school district pays about $3 million to the school district for property taxes. They're our largest taxpayer of, of anybody. But even the casino, being our largest taxpayer, is only about a percent and a half of our overall tax base. So, we're very diversified. We have a really strong portfolio as far as our property taxes go. So, not one thing can come in and, and really take, take us down in a bad direction. So, I think it's always important to point that out. But there is a, there is a relationship between property values and the state funding formula. The more value you have, they look at your district and say, well, if they have more value, they can probably pay more of their, their overall expenses out of the, out of local money versus state money. So, ours is about 50/50. Our unrestricted aid, 48% of our operating revenue comes from that. There's something that was passed into the last biennial budget. We're in this, we're in the third year. We had a biennial budget that was passed back in 2022. We had a new one passed in 2024. The Fair School Funding Plan got put in place in the last biennium. It was to be phased in one-sixth over six-year period, so three bienniums, phased in one-sixth every year. So, we're in the third year of that. And the last time I did my math on what's three-sixths, that equals one-half. So, it's, we were, we're phased in by one-half right now through 2024. The new biennial budget starts in 2026. We have no promise that those last two, that last third will be put into the plan. So, we got to watch that with our forecasts in the future. So, what I've put in this forecast right now is not phased, that, that it's not going to be phased in. So, if it does get phased in, that will be in a good, that'll be better for the school district. We are proponents, or I am a proponent of the Fair School Funding Plan. I think it's a good way to fund schools. I, I think it's on, it was built on strong, a strong foundation on how to calculate fair school funding. But there is one, one piece that's important to it also, is there's a, there's a cost set that needs to be updated every biennium. They weren't going to put that cost set in. It was a 2018 cost set. They did put it in in the last few days of the budget process and moved it to the 2022 cost set. So, those, those, that, those changes in four years made a huge difference in the amount of money that we received from the state. So, we need to make sure when we're, when I'm out there, you know, talking to legislators and talking to other folks in the community, that the cost set and the phase-in need to be together when we pass this new biennial budget in a couple of years. So, those things are significant. The other thing I'd like to point out, interest rates, you know, have gone up quite a bit. We, we do receive, we do invest our intra-money, and we have been fortunate to be able to invest our dollars at a higher interest rate and get some additional income or interest earnings on our, on our money. So, this has been good for the school district. I'm conservatively planning out in the future what we'll receive for that. So, for the most part, everything in our revenue highlights are conservative estimates. We hope that things get better with the new biennium and reappraisal, well, you know, we'll have more reports after that all gets done, but we will, we think we're in good shape with our revenues moving forward. Move to expenditures. We do have agreements in place with all of our collective bargaining units through 2025, so we have a good idea what our cost set will be for that. Substitute pay, we are still trying very hard to keep our substitute pool strong. We've continued our incentives that we put, put in a few years ago. For every, you know, for every 50-day increment, a sub will get a, an incentive to work 50 days, 100 days, 150 days. That really helped getting our subs pools up, and we want to continue that. So, we've, we've done much better getting subs in our school district, but it has, it is a trend nationally that it is pretty hard to get some subs. So, we're doing everything we can to do that. Health insurance benefits has been a struggle. This, our health insurance is on a calendar-year basis, goes from January to December. This year, we're looking at a 12.6% increase starting in January 1, and project out each year for the next, all the years of the forecast of another 10%. Hopefully, that's not true. Again, that's a conservative estimate. Hopefully, those things aren't true. But we are working hard as our insurance committee that is also, we have membership, we have membership on that committee of the, all our collective bargaining units, and we're all working hard to try to see what we can do to get those, those costs down. We do, because we are self-insured, we have a separate fund. I talked about that in those internal service funds in that annual review. We do set aside dollars to pay our claims, so we are responsible for our own claims. Our health insurance fund is, is healthy. We want to look at it the same way. We have about a four-month carryover in that right now, so we're in pretty good shape with our health insurance fund, because if you run your health insurance fund down and you don't have any money, and those claims have to be paid. So, kind of like the food service department I was telling you about, if we run out of money, the money's got to come from somewhere. So, we're very careful in how we look at our health insurance fund balance and make sure that we have enough money going in to pay the claims going out. Purchase services and materials and supplies and things like that, there, there have been some heavy inflation. I think we've all experienced that, so we're just monitoring inflation, make sure that we are staying on target with that. Finally, I'll switch to any questions on the forecast part of the presentation. All right. I just want to point out a few things. The last slide, that's hard to read for any in the, in the community. I'll just give you some highlights of this. So, every year, I look at comparisons with other Franklin County school districts. There are 16 of them in Franklin County. The information for taxes are for tax year 2022, collection year 2023. We don't have the new values yet for all the school districts in the county, and we don't have their millage rates. So, this is, is what was just collected in 2023. So, we're looking at only residential property tax millage rates. So, the first column to the left includes all levies, operating levies, bond levies, PI levies. If you look at those, we're 13th out of 16 school districts is what our, our millage rate is. If we look at operating levies only, we're 14 out of 16. There's only a few districts lower than us. If we look at our expenditure per pupil, and this goes back to fiscal year 2022, because this information comes from the Department of Education, and this is the most current information I have, we are 12th out of 16 school districts on what we spend per pupil. If you look at what, how we compare to the state average, the state average, we spend roughly $1,200 less per pupil than the state average. If we spent $1,200 per pupil more, that would be $24 million, we would be spending more per year in Southwestern. So, we have some good, because we're a larger school, school district, we have some economies of scale, and we're able to do some things more efficiently than a smaller school district, just to be honest. So, we are proud of how we try to get good bang for our buck, and we try to provide a great education at a good cost to our, to our taxpayers. So, any questions on anything that I presented tonight?
So, I know that we created some additional positions with the ESAR funds, and we've spent a lot of ESAR funds. As those funds no longer exist, how will the budget absorb those costs?
We have planned some of those positions to come back to the general fund in this forecast, similar to when we go, if you go back to like, when we looked at all-day, every-day kindergarten, when, when we planned for that, we put it in outline years to make sure that we had the money to do that. We have put some of those positions back in here. Some of them can be absorbed by some of the, the special revenue funds that we talked about, some of our title funds, some of our funds that are already existing, but some fu, some of these funds and these positions will have to come from the general fund to continue.
One conversation that's come up lately has been about our special education resources. Thinking about that chart of where we compare to other districts, can you say where we stand as far as special education investment in our students offhand, or would we need to?
I would have to dig into that number a little bit more, but I know of all, of all our, of all of our expenditure categories, special education has increased the most of any of our functions.
Has there been additional state resources to help with those, or we absorb those as a district? I know the answer, I'm just asking for the record.
We absorb those as a district.
That's what I thought, because the state will not provide additional resources. Anyone else have any additional questions? Thank you. All right. Next on our agenda will be board reports. Hearing none, we'll move to public participation relative to agenda items. None there either.
So I know that we created some additional positions with the, uh, S R funds. We've spent a lot of S R funds. As those funds no longer exist, how will the budget absorb those costs?
We have planned some of those positions to come back to the general fund in this forecast, similar to, uh, when we go, if you go back to like, when we looked at all-day, every-day kindergarten, when, when we planned for that, we put it in outline years to make sure that we had the money to do that. We have put some of those positions back in here. Some of them can be absorbed by some of the, the, the special revenue funds that we talked about, some of our title funds, some of our, uh, funds that are already existing, but some fu- some of these funds and these positions will have to come from the general fund to continue.
One, uh, conversation that's come up lately has been about our special education resources. Can, thinking about that chart of where we compare to other districts, can you say where we stand as far as special education investment in our students offhand, or would we need to?
I would have to dig into that number a little bit more. But I know of all, of all our, of all of our expenditure categories, special education has increased the most of any of our functions.
Has there been additional state resources to help with those, or we absorb those as a district? I, I know the answer, I'm, I'm just asking for the record.
We absorb those as a district.
That's what I thought, 'cause the state will not provide additional resources. Anyone else have any additional questions? Thank you. Uh, next on our agenda will be board reports. Here are none. We'll move to public participation relative to agenda items, none there either. Uh, all right, great. So now we'll go to Vice President Shrinar with the legislative liaison report.
No report this evening, Mr. President.
All right, another check, good. Uh, student staff and achievement report, Kelly Martindale.
Yes, I got lots of great things to talk about, so here we go. Earlier this month, Franklin Heights High School NJROTC program, uh, hosted a platitude dedication ceremony for Vietnam veterans who were graduates of Franklin Heights. And the families of these students, uh, and the program and veterans on staff were in attendance, uh, to honor fellow Golden Falcon Vietnam vets. Uh, last month, Grove City High School NJROTC cadets took home the overall first-place trophy at the Hamilton Athletic Meet. Uh, the cadets placed first, second, and third in the following competitions. Uh, first place for Tiger War, and let's see here, uh, second place for the Navy SEAL Challenge, and third place in the sprint setup, sprint push-ups. So great job, uh, Greyhound Cadets, that's really exciting. They did so well there. Um, again, earlier this month, we had several vocalists from across the district that participated in the Ohio Capitol Conference. Uh, let's see here, the Academic League hosted an honor choir event to showcase the top four vocal musical students from each OCC high school. Choir students and directors spent a day at Capital University learning new music and preparing for their evening performance for families. All four Southwestern City School District high schools were represented at this event. And here are the students that got to participate. For Central Crossing High School, we had Trey Howard, Charles Trejo, Bella Barone, and Caitlin Wheeler. For Franklin Heights High School was Jack Alchire, Noah Harding, Kalissa McKinney, and Kelly Coma. For Grove City High School, it was Max Warrens, Elijah Davis, Ally Ferguson, and Savannah Reardon. And for Westland High School was Avery Ryan, Peyton Bartholomew, Michael Hicks, and Andreas Avila. So congratulations to all of those talented vocalists. Uh, and then this month, uh, Ohio Health offered seven multi-skilled health students work-based learning positions at five of their Columbus area hospitals. So those of you that don't know, we, um, do that at the Career Academy, and I'm really excited to talk about this, 'cause this just makes me excited for, uh, their lifelong pursuit of education and health. Uh, but Doctors Hospital had Salma Mohammed and Amy Chin. Dublin Methodist Hospital brought on Zoe McNamara. Right Medical Center brought on Zaya Mara Valdez. Grove City Methodist Hospital brought in Jenny Magana. And Riverside Methodist Hospital brought Christopher Plastiancia and Marissa Messer. And so what happens with this is, uh, if these students retain their part-time employment after graduation from the Southwestern Career Academy, Ohio Health will pay five thousand two hundred and seventy dollars a year of each of these, uh, students' college tuition, which could amount to up to twenty-one thousand per student for a four-year degree. So congratulations to those students. Um, that's a huge honor and very exciting for the future. And then moving on to Southwestern City School District gives back. Um, if you all were in town on October thirty-first, you know exactly what kind of weather we encountered that night. Uh, we had twenty-five Westland High School Air Force JROTC cadets, a few alumni, volunteered to collect canned goods for the Mil- uh, Military Veterans Resource Center. And all of these donated goods, uh, went directly to veterans in need. They collected seven hundred and eighty-nine pounds, uh, surpassing their goal of seven hundred and thirty-five pounds of canned goods. That was very exciting, and we can give them a little extra props for, uh, that inclement weather that night. It was snowing and raining and sleeting and all kinds of good stuff. Um, and then also Central Crossing High School Key Club held its annual canned food drive recently, and thanks to the generosity of students and staff, they not only surpassed their goal, um, and actually exceeded it, uh, over the past three years, they collected two thousand seven hundred and two cans alone the last day of the drive, uh, for a total of six thousand three hundred and sixty-four food items for donations, and those will go to Grove City Food Pantry to help local families. So awesome job, comments. And that completes the report.
Thank you, Ms. Martindale. One thing I would just add to that was, uh, the district PTA also had a clothing drive, um, and they are still in need of coats. So if anyone has extra coats you'd like to donate, um, we'd like you to reach out to the district PTA, uh, 'cause they would appreciate it. They appreciate any donations, shoes, clothes, any of that stuff, and specifically, we're still looking for coats for kids. Uh, next, we'll go to items for action, Fiscal and Operational Management, Chris Bosso.
Thank you, Mr. President. Under Fiscal and Operational Management this evening, we have eight items for action. The first will be the revised permanent appropriations for fiscal year two thousand twenty-three, two thousand twenty-four. It recommended the Board of Education approve the revised permanent appropriations. Item number two, the investment in financial statements for October two thousand twenty-three. It's recommended that in accordance with section one-three-five-point-one-four of the Higher Revised Code, the Board of Education approved the investments. Exhibit X-two in the CAS positioning report for the month of October two thousand twenty-three. Exhibit X-three, as submitted, total investments, three hundred and sixty-nine million, eight hundred and thirty-nine thousand, forty-five dollars and forty-nine cents. Interest earnings month-to-date, one million, one hundred and thirty-three thousand, five hundred and twenty-one dollars and ninety-three cents. Interest earnings year-to-date, five million, three hundred and fifty-five thousand, eight hundred and thirty dollars and eighty-five cents. Interest rates vary from point-two-five percent to five-point-four percent. Item number three, payment of bills, exhibit X-four. It is recommended the Board of Education approve the payment of bills in accordance with the checks submitted for the month of October two thousand twenty-three. Item number four, donations, exhibit X-five. It's recommended that the Board of Education accept the donations of nine thousand, three hundred and eighty-six dollars and sixty-one cents, uh, as detailed in exhibit X-five, and authorize letters of appreciation to be sent to all those donors. Thank you so much for that, donors. Item number five, authorization to pay the bills in accordance with section fifty-seven-oh-five-point-four-one of the Higher Revised Code. Um, exhibit X-six, it recommended the Board of Education authorize the treasurer to pay the bills for the month of October, which were not processed in accordance with section fifty-seven-oh-five-point-four-one of their higher, of their, uh, Ohio Revised Code. Item number six would be the agreement with Baker Tilly Municipal Advisors LLP. It's recommended the Board of Education enter to a master advisory agreement with Baker Tilly Municipal Advisors LLP to service, or to serve the district an independent registered municipal advisor as detailed in exhibit X-seven. Uh, Baker Tilly provides services for the sales of notes and bonds for the districts for major capital projects. Um, item number seven, uh, appoint Rich and Gillis Law Group LLC. Um, it's recommended the Board of Education authorize, uh, Jeffrey A. Rich and the law firm of Rich and Gillis Law Group LLC to, uh, represent the Board of Education in real estate tax matters as required by law for the calendar year of two thousand twenty-four, exhibit X-eight. Um, the service of Rich and Gillis Law Group ensures that each business in our community is treated equally and pays their fair share for the property taxes due to our district. Um, and item number eight, approve the five-year forecast, which Hugh, uh, presented, uh, said recommended the Board of Education approve that five-year forecast as presented, exhibit X-nine. After reviewing these items, Mr. President, I move them for passage.
Thank you, Mr. Bosso. Do we have a second?
Second, Shrinar.
Thank you, Vice President Shrinar. Any discussion? Here are none. Roll call, please.
Mr. Bosso.
Uh, yes.
Mr. Shrinar.
Yes.
Ms. Johnson.
Yes.
Ms. Martindale. Mr. Caldwell.
Yes. Next on our items for action, we have policy with Ms. Kathy Johnson.
Thank you, President Caldwell. Uh, tonight is the second and final reading of the following revised policies. Policy zero-one-four-one-point-two, conflict of interest. One-sixty-six, one-six-six-two-point-zero-one, compliance officer investigations. Twenty-four-sixty-point-zero-four, independent educational evaluations. Twenty-six-twenty-three-point-zero-two, third-grade reading guarantee. Fifty-three-twenty, immunizations. Fifty-four-thirty-point-zero-one, graduation recognitions. Fifty-six-ten-point-zero-five, student suspension. And finally, eight-three-three-zero, student records. Having reviewed these items, I move them for passage.
Do we have a second?
Second, then.
Thank you, sir. Um, any discussion? Here are none. Roll call, please.
Ms. Johnson.
Yes.
Mr. Bosso.
Yes.
Ms. Martindale.
Yes.
Mr. Shrinar.
Yes.
Mr. Caldwell.
Yes. Next on our items for action, curriculum, Ms. Kathy Johnson.
Thank you again, President Caldwell. Tonight, we have the, um, second and final reading of the Art Course of Study, grades K through twelve. That entire draft copy is attached to the agenda. Having reviewed that, read it in total, I move that we pass, uh, the adoption.
Second, Shrinar.
Thank you, Mr. Shrinar. Any discussion? Here are none. Roll call, please.
Ms. Johnson.
Yes.
Mr. Shrinar.
Yes.
Mr. Bosso.
No.
Ms. Martindale.
Yes.
Mr. Caldwell.
Yes. Next on our items for action, Student Schools Community, Ms. Martindale again.
Uh, thank you, President Caldwell. On the agenda for this evening for Student Schools Community, we have two items. I've got Jackson Middle School, eighth-grade students would like to travel to Washington, D.C. The dates for that would be May seventh, April tenth. They will be missing four days of school. Uh, trip expenses are paid by students and parents, and actually about two hundred and fifty-five students and twenty-five chaperones signed up for this trip, so that's exciting that they're, uh, getting the opportunity to resume those trips. Uh, and then the second item is Grove City High School German exchange students, uh, want to travel to Berlin and Heidenheim, Germany. Uh, they will miss no school as this trip is currently set for June eleventh through the second. Uh, we have ten students going with two chaperones, and again, uh, all trip expenses are being paid by students and parents. And having reviewed these items, I recommend our passage and move to do so at this time.
Do we have a second?
All seven.
Thank you, ma'am. Uh, any discussion? Here are none. Roll call, please.
Ms. Martindale.
Yes.
Ms. Johnson.
Yes.
Mr. Bosso.
Yes.
Mr. Shrinar.
Yes.
Mr. Caldwell.
Yes. Now for our personnel report, we go to Mr. Vice President Lee Shrinar.
Thank you, President Caldwell. On the board agenda this evening are eight personnel items involving three-hundred-and-twenty persons. This includes twenty-one certificated and administrative resignations, four certificated changes in employment, two-hundred-and-twenty-seven certificated employments, twelve classified resignations, eleven classified changes in employment, forty-three classified employments, one amendment to the superintendent contract, and one message of condolence for a deceased staff member. Uh, it is recommended that Dr. Weiss be granted ten additional vacation days, and that his contract reflect the adjustments as provided in the attachment. On a sad note, uh, this item for action is in regards to Ms. Nancy McHale. Began her career in the Southwestern City School District on December eighteenth, two thousand, as a cook at Darbydale Elementary School. She also served as a cook at East Franklin Elementary, Southwestern Career Academy, Central Crossing High School, and Holt Crossing Intermediate, until the two thousand sixteen, two thousand seventeen school year, when she became a head cook, second degree, at Finland Middle School. On July first, two thousand twenty, she became a custodian at Franklin Woods Intermediate School for one year. She moved to J.C. Summer Elementary on July first, two thousand twenty-one, where she served as a custodian for the remainder of her career. In recognition of her dedicated service to the students in our district, a motion is in order at this time by the Board of Education, expressing sympathy to the family and friends of Ms. McHale, who passed away on November sixth, two thousand twenty-three. After reviewing these action items, Mr. President, I move them now for passage.
Thank you, sir. Do we have a second?
Second, then.
Thank you, sir. Uh, roll call, please.
Mr. Shrinar.
Yes.
Mr. Bosso.
Yes.
Ms. Johnson.
Yes.
Ms. Martindale. Mr. Caldwell.
Yes. Uh, now we will have public participation relative to non-agenda items, and we have Crispina Gonzalez.
Buenas noches. Mi nombre es Crispina Antero, y soy la mamá de Leonardo Beltrán, que fue víctima de abuso por parte de una maestra de la escuela Style Family Resource Center.
Hello, I'm the mom of Lea, eh, Leonardo Beltrán. Eh, my son, he was, he suffered by bullying in Stiles Family Resource Center.
A mí me avisaron el día veintinueve de octubre que mi hijo había sido abusado por una maestra. No me dijeron el nombre de la maestra, no me dijeron nada, solamente me dijeron que había sido arrastrado. Así en esas palabras me dijeron. No me podían dar más información porque estaba bajo investigación por la escuela y child service.
On October twenty-nine, eh, someone just, eh, made me aware that he suffered, eh, someone like, eh, pushed him like to the floor around, and nobody told me who was it. I just was, eh, alert of this situation.
Mi hijo había comenzado a no querer ir a la escuela, lloraba, y él le gustaba ir a la escuela el año pasado. Yo no sabía del problema que había pasado, y yo pedí al centro preescolar que lo cambiaran. Me dijeron que no, que no se podía. Yo, el día veinticinco de octubre, pasé a la escuela a recoger a Leo, y pregunté a las maestras por qué Leo lloraba. Me dijeron que a él le gustaba ir a la escuela.
Eh, one day that I went to pick him up to school, eh, he, on the October twenty-fifth, he's a kid that he always liked to go to school, but, eh, since that day, he started crying, and one day, Mom went to school and asked the teachers why was the reason that he, he was always crying.
Ese día yo lo llevé temprano a la casa. Cuando llegamos a casa, yo le estaba cambiando la ropa, y él traía una marca en su mano izquierda. Yo le pregunté qué era, porque parecía ser como si le hubieran picado con un lapicero. Y él me dijo que le dolía, y me dijo que la maestra le había pegado. Me dio el nombre de la maestra, pero yo no le puse atención. Yo dije, una maestra no le puede pegar al niño. Pero el día veintinueve que ellos me llamaron, entonces yo realicé, dije, entonces algo está pasando.
Eh, that day that I picked him up from school, eh, I was changing him clothes, and I noticed he had like a stab on his arm, and it looked like, like he was stabbed, eh, by a pencil, and Mom asked him like if he was okay, because he started complaining, eh, of pain. And at first, the kid told him, eh, it was, eh, the teacher, and he gave her like the name and everything, but Mom didn't wanna believe it, eh, back then, until she was aware of this situation on October twenty-nine.
Leo solamente tenía cuatro años. Bueno, el día, el día de hoy cumple cuatro años, o tenía tres. Pero él no es capaz de verbalizar una oración. Está en clases especiales, se puede decir, porque está tarde con su habla. Entonces, mi pregunta es, yo creo, a mi ver, yo considero que no le dieron la importancia que era porque el caso lo cerraron, y hay muchos, ah, quejas de padres en esa misma escuela.
So I feel like, eh, it didn't take the, the special treat that it needed to be treated as, eh, when a lot of parents also like complain, eh, in this school about this situation, and this case just was closed and nothing related to it happened.
Hasta ahora son cuatro estudiantes los que se han cambiado de esa escuela con esa maestra. Algo está pasando, no puede ser que solamente, ah, los estén cambiando por nada. Para mi ver... Para mi ver, yo creo que sí hay algo y que deberían de ahondar más en, en la investigación.
Until this day today, there's four students of the same class that have been changed eh, to another school. Eh, I feel like there should be more, like a deeper investigation into it and see if something is going on.
Ma'am, one, one second. Without objection, I'd like to extend her time to let her finish her remarks. Please, continue.
Hasta ahora yo les, yo les pregunté si había cámaras. Para mi ver, yo considero que las clases de niños especiales deberían de tener cámaras en el salón. Eso ayudaría mucho porque cuando a mí me llamaron, yo estuve como dos semanas sin una respuesta. Bajo mucha presión, me sentía culpable, me sentía triste porque sentía que no había protegido a mi hijo.
And my suggest eh, for kids that need special needs like my kid, because he's eh, turning four and he still cannot make like a whole sentence, those eh, type of classrooms should have cameras because I was like investigating for like two weeks and I couldn't do anything about it.
Otra cosa que está pasando, la maestra un día de estos llevó a la escuela con ropa muy inapropiada de una playera. Parece ser que alguien tomó una foto, la hicieron viral. Y ahora están investigando al asistente de la maestra por haber hecho, supuestamente ella fue la que hizo viral, pero no se ha comprobado nada. Porque esta maestra llevó a la escuela con una camiseta muy inapropiada para usarla con niños. Y ahora están poniéndole más atención a la persona que viralizó la foto que a la maestra que se supone que es agresiva, que hay niños en, en su cargo. Leo ya está en otra escuela, pero hay más niños que están bajo el cuidado de ella, y a mí eso me preocupa.
So problem with the same teacher eh, according to what Mom is saying eh, picture of this teacher was taken eh, they say by the, by other teacher in the classroom saying that she was wearing very inappropriate clothes and not very respectful towards kids. She was also saying that they're now paying more attention to the teacher that took the picture instead of like the aggressive teacher that is like having this type of behavior and also wearing this type of clothes.
Leo era, es, el año pasado Leo lloraba el día que no iba a la escuela, y ahora todos los días Leo llora cuando ve su mochila, tal vez porque él cree que va a ir a la misma escuela. Se tranquiliza ya cuando está dentro del salón, pero todos los días él llora y eso no pasaba. Entonces, algo pasó con esta maestra, y a mí me gustaría que investigaran.
Before this incident happened eh, Leo, he was normal, like he wouldn't cry to go to school. Now, like every day that he goes to school, when he sees his backpack, he starts crying, thinking that he's gonna go to the same place.
Muchas gracias.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mrs. Gonzalez. Now we have items for discussion, board items. Anything to the board? At this time, it is recommended that the Board of Education adjourn to executive session according to Policy 1, I'm sorry, 0166 to consider the disciplined demotion, appointment, or employment of a public employee. We do not anticipate any action following our executive session. So you are welcome to leave, or you're welcome to stay, completely up to you. Either way, we still have to dismiss, but we don't anticipate public action after we return. Thank you, everyone. Need a second?
Motion, a second.
Oh, I'm sorry. I need a motion to second, yes. Mr. Schreiner?
I'll second.
And Ms. Johnson, roll call?
Mr. Schreiner.
Yes.
Ms. Johnson.
Yes.
Mr. Bosso.
Yes.
Ms. Martindale. Mr. Caldwell.
Yes. Now you're all welcome to leave. Sorry.